How did you find your job? Where did you get your school programs? You guys, everybody. Experience at school?
Yeah.
We best friends. You guys have a spot for lights, but not everybody. Let's see if we can add it to the clock. Sorry.
I want to be out of here by night.
The smaller?
Too long. We only went two hundred. Oh, we're gonna add two. This is from the... Because there was this one after. Nobody left that light on. And I think that my back, every one day, every one day is a flame talking. And who does their commit? Promises added. We need to like just.
Since you mentioned. It's true. Yeah. It's true.
Seven point seven.
All right, good evening, everyone. I call this meeting of Hamtramck City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, September twenty-six, two thousand twenty-three. What the clerk called the rules, please?
Councillor Fay?
Present.
Councillor Musa?
Yes.
Councillor El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councillor Wood?
Yes.
Councillor Chowry?
Present.
And Councillor Hassan is not here today. And Mr. Mayor, you're present. Do you have a call?
Thank you. It's right for the speeches. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the citizens of America, to the free and equal public, to the citizens of our nation under God, to the citizens of the world. Thank you. Do we have any community announcements?
We have a few, Mr. Mayor. The annual trunk-or-treat is coming up October twenty-fifth. We'll probably announce that once or twice more. It's gonna be at five p.m. to six-thirty p.m. out in Zustman Park. We have that posted. We also have a notice that DTE contacted us on. DTE is trying to get into houses to inspect meters. Apparently, they're having a lot of problems doing it because people are not reaching back out to them. They're sending notices, and they said ultimately, people will get shut off if you do not respond because it's a mandatory-by-law thing. So they asked us to announce that. Also, the constant one on here is mutual aid. All the details are on there. That's all I had. Oh, I'm sorry. Carolyn, you had one, too.
Yep, so the property auction is now live. It's a silent bid, so anyone who wants to bid on a property can turn in their sealed bid to the clerk's office, and those applications are out the store and also online. And then the DDA is doing a project called Shop the World. Then we have flyers here for that as well, so download this QR code with your phone and check out the event.
I have an announcement as well. AV ballots go out this Friday, so look for those in your mailbox. And if you are requesting an AV ballot, make sure you fill out an AV application or come to the clerk's office for us to take care of you.
I see an announcement here. Is someone supposed to read it?
That's from Mr. Gray.
Do I give it, Greg?
On behalf of a nonpartisan committee to introduce the candidates for the common council, I would like to inform everyone, including the public, that on Sunday, October the eighth, there's gonna be a candidates forum that will be held in the Hamtramck Public Library. It is organized by a joint committee that's comprised of Yemenis, Bengalis, and other ethnic groups in the area. The event, the doors open at four o'clock for the event. At four-thirty, there's computer refreshments. At five o'clock, the actual forum starts, and each person attending will have a chance to ask a question of either one or multiple candidates. And the conclusion is planned for six-thirty of the forum. So everyone is invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We move to the proclamation, recognitions, and presentations. And we have first one, Downtown Development Authority, two thousand twenty-three, January report.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up right now.
Counselors, Mr. Mayor, I'm actually stepping in for Secretary Long with the DDA, so I don't have anything prepared today, but I can take you really quickly through our DDA annual report for two thousand twenty-two. A little bit late, but better late than never. So I guess this initiative is really sort of one in a larger initiative to hold ourselves accountable, to be better, to better represent the business community, and to let you all know what we're up to. So I think you can skip down to the next page. So the first piece of really what we do is, is we work to better maintain the main street, that being Joseph Campo Avenue. And really, like, the most important things that we have done this year and the last several years is snow removal. We've contracted with a snow removal contractor to make sure that the sidewalks are plowed when there's more than two inches of snow on the ground. We've also sponsored many of the big events, the Labor Day Festival, the Music Festival, the Panchu Run, et cetera. And we've met with Max L. Guinness to talk about her study on trash and trash removal. Go to the next one. This is just a slide with a couple of the numbers, important numbers for two thousand twenty-two. The number of new businesses opened. I think people have probably have noticed there are less vacancies on Joseph Campo than in previous years. We've been really actually making a pretty big push. We have a social media coordinator who's now been posting on behalf of the DDA, getting the word out about events and various initiatives, new businesses, and have had pretty good success, as you can see from those numbers. And we also awarded a facade grant in two thousand twenty-two. Couple other accomplishments, the Racks-to-Ride program. You guys probably noticed, this was now quite a while ago, but we got a grant, a small grant, for installation of bike racks, and we made that into an art competition. It was very successful. I think we had maybe fifteen or twenty entrants. I don't remember if you remember, Carolyn, but it was a...
Similar with the number.
Good participation. And also beautified the street and made it more accessible for bikers. One other important initiative that we did is we hired JV Consulting, and they have surveyed the inventory of vacant businesses, you know, open spaces, the number of buildings, the owners, and really tried to give us a baseline of information about, you know, who the business owners are, who the people are that are living and working in the DDA, something that we haven't had in the past, and we think is important to making sure that we better communicate with our constituents. Also, you probably have noticed some planter box improvements. I would really probably point to Vin Blassi, who is not a member of the DDA, but she's attended a lot of our meetings and worked on that in concert with the DDA. Probably go to the next. So it's just a slide with some pictures of some of the things that we've worked on. And then I think most importantly, the goals for two thousand twenty-three and beyond, we've really been working, you know, sort of, I talked a little bit about the surveying that we did of the business owners. That is the foundation, really. And what we've been doing in two thousand twenty-two is the foundation, really, to get us hopefully to the next step, which is Main Street accreditation. That will unlock a lot of resources to the state of Michigan that you can only access financially and otherwise, once you become a Main Street member. So a lot of these initial steps that we've been doing, they're not as interesting, maybe as fun, but they're the baseline that we need to take that next step and make more resources available for our business owners and residents. And I think that's just about it. If you have any questions, I guess I can take that.
Thank you. So I guess this was the two thousand twenty-two anyway?
Correct.
There's a typo, Max, in there. It says two thousand twenty-three anyway. I mean, here, the agenda.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thanks for the first slide.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. All right, the next one is the proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Who would like to read that?
Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Proclamation recognizing Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas breast cancer is a significant health concern affecting women and, in some cases, men, regardless of age, race, or background. And whereas early detection and awareness play a vital role in preventing the spread of breast cancer and improving the chances of successful treatment. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month provides an opportunity to unite as a community and a nation to raise awareness about breast cancer, support those affected by it, and promote education about prevention and early detection. And whereas countless individuals, organizations, and medical professions are dedicated to research, advocacy, and support efforts that contribute to progress in the fight against breast cancer. Now therefore, I am or Gallup, mayor of Hamtramck, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in our city and encourage all citizens to participate in activities and events that promote breast cancer awareness, offer support to those affected, and emphasize the importance of regular screening and early detection. Let us come together to honor the survivors, remember those we have lost, and reaffirm our commitment to the ongoing battle against breast cancer. By working collectively, we can make strides towards a future free from the burden of this disease.
Thank you. Next one is proclamation for Fire Prevention Week.
I was gonna do the Polish one.
I have to read this one again. I'll read this one.
She asked me to do the pronunciations.
Proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week, October eighth through the fourteenth. Whereas fire is a devastating force that can cause significant loss of life, property, and natural resources. And whereas the safety and well-being of our community depends on our commitment to preventing fires and promoting fire safety. And whereas Fire Prevention Week observed annually in October as a dedicated time to underscore the importance of fire safety and emergency preparedness. And whereas the theme of Fire Prevention Week two thousand twenty-three, kitchen fires, cook with caution, serves as a critical reminder of the need for vigilance in our homes, particularly in the kitchen where many fires originate. And whereas our firefighters, first responders, and dedicated community members work tirelessly to prevent fires, protect our community, and respond to emergency. Now therefore, I am or Gallup, mayor of Hamtramck, do hereby proclaim the week of October eighth through the fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, as Fire Prevention Week in our city, and urge all citizens to participate in fire safety education programs, review their fire escape plans, and take proactive steps to reduce fire risks in their homes and workplace. Let us recognize and express our gratitude to our firefighters and first responders who risk their lives to keep us safe. By raising awareness and taking preventative measures, we can create a safer environment for all.
Okay. The next one is the Polish-American Heritage Month.
All right. Proclamation recognizing Polish-American Heritage Month. Whereas the United States of America is a diverse nation enriched by the cultures, traditions, and contributions of various ethnic groups, including the Polish-American community. And whereas the Polish-American community has a rich, storied history in the United States dating back to the James Stone Colony in the seventeenth century and later the first wave of millions of Poles migrating to America in the early nineteenth century. And whereas Polish-Americans have played a pivotal role in shaping the cultural, social, and economic tapestry of our nation, contributing to fields such as politics, science, arts, sports, and business. And whereas Polish-Americans have preserved their heritage with pride, passing down traditions, language, music, dance, and cuisine, which continues to enrich our American mosaic. And whereas the month of October holds special significance as it commemorates the first Polish settlers, as well as the deaths of American Revolutionary War heroes, General Ksmerz Polaski, the father of the American cavalry, and Thaddeus Kacuskow, and the enduring ties between Poland and the United States. And whereas, by designated October as Polish-American Heritage Month, we honor the enduring legacy of Polish-Americans and encourage all Americans to learn about and appreciate their cultural heritage. Now therefore, I am or Gallup, mayor of Hamtramck, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Polish-American Heritage Month in our city and encourage all residents to participate in events and activities that promote the understanding and appreciation of Polish-American cultural heritage. Let us honor the heritage and accomplishments of Polish-Americans and celebrate the diversity that enriches our community and strengthens the bonds of our nation.
Thank you. Did you practice pronouncing those names?
No, I got those.
No, he obviously spoke. I don't pronounce them wrong.
All right, thank you. Next one is the proclamation for the Yemeni Revolution.
I think.
You're gonna take it, or I can?
Unless you wanna...
I can. I'm sure you guys will do one.
Yeah, sure. So proclamation recognition of the Yemeni Revolution. Whereas the Yemeni people inside the country in Prague celebrate the sixty-first anniversary of the Yemeni Revolution of September twenty-six, nineteen sixty-two. The revolution in which the Yemeni people overthrew the monarchy regime that kept the country in dark ages for centuries. And whereas the twenty-sixth of September marked the birth of the Arab Republic of Yemen in the northern part of the country. Whereas this paved the way for the revolution of the fourteenth of October, one year later, in the southern part of Yemen against the British occupation, which led to its liberation and independence. And whereas the outcome of both revolutions was the reunion of the country on May twenty-second, nineteen ninety. Whereas the people of Yemen continue to face the current waves of counterrevolutions that threaten their republic, unity, and sovereignty. And whereas they continue to fight for liberty, unity, democracy, and social and economic equity, and justice. And whereas the Yemeni, whereas Yemenis realize the importance and the value of the twenty-sixth of September and the fourteenth of October revolutions, after they experienced the rule of violent militias over the past several years, they now honor and recognize their September and October revolutions and celebrate them like they have never done before. This is happening in concurrence with their ongoing struggle to regain their republic, freedom, unity, and sovereignty. Now therefore, we have resolved, the city of Hamtramck hereby proclaims the twenty-sixth of September and the fourteenth of October to be designated as the Yemeni Revolution Day, and encourage, recognize, and congratulate the Yemeni people on celebrating those national holidays. So we're done with this proclamation period, and we move to the addition deletions on agenda approval. We have the first one, resolution two thousand twenty-three. That would be one fifty-one, approving amendment of general provision of Hamtramck City Council, revised nine-two-six-two-three. Can I get a motion to that? Second. All right, so everyone in favor of adding this? Fine. So this would be F, resolution two thousand twenty-three, one fifty-one. The next one is resolution two thousand twenty-three, one fifty-two, approving the contract for the general liability insurance policy. Motion? Second. All right, all in favor? Aye. And Q, that would be resolution two thousand twenty-three, one fifty-two, G. All right, we move now to the public comment section.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, I have Matthew Keegler from Garden City. Welcome, three minutes.
While I don't live in Hamtramck, I do teach in Hamtramck and strongly feel it is my duty to advocate against things that have potential to harm children and young people in the community. I first want to say that I condemn any act that destroys property. Vandalism is vandalism, and that's true whether it's a flag being torn down or a civic poster being defaced. Additionally, I strongly condemn any group that labels anyone, current administration or not, a terrorist because it is Islamophobic and should be labeled as such. That said, I firmly believe the minority or ethnic intimidation ordinance will criminalize young people and further harm the community. I have gathered from multiple sources that many acts of vandalism are being done by teenagers. I do not see how jail time and fines do anything other than furthering a cycle of violence and therefore need to be eliminated. Instead, I call for the council to create programs of restorative justice and community service, especially for minors. Restorative justice gives offenders opportunities to take responsibility for their actions and to repair the harm. They take responsibility by holding dialogue with victims, repairing or paying damages, or by taking other similar actions. And thank you for sharing the history of Yemen on a personal note, and hope, I hope, for peace in that area.
Thank you.
I actually can, if I can say, I'm actually working on something with a couple of other cities that I'm gonna present to the council and mayor regarding restorative justice for juveniles and to work towards something similar to what you're actually talking about exactly because we don't think that it's helpful to punish juveniles for things, rather to help them set their straight for the future. So we are actually, I am actually working on something like that, and I haven't really talked about it yet, but soon I will be, so actually, skeeting up. Josh Hanskynak?
Thank you for your time once again. My name is Josh Hanskynak. First, I'd like to speak kind of on a personal note. For the agenda item, I do believe that you should purchase AC units for your server rooms. Computers get incredibly hot really fast, and they break because of the heat. I think having a cool room for your computers is very important. But I'm also up here to represent the Hamtramck Clear Alliance, and I want to echo sentiments that have already been shared today, that we are not looking to criminalize children. We're not really looking to criminalize everybody. We want to build, or anybody, we want to build a safe and inclusive city for the, for everybody to feel welcome here and for everybody to be good neighbors to each other here. And so that's our goal, and I think that we're sort of practices, restorative justice is more aligned with that goal. I look forward to being, having the opportunity to set out a table and work out some plans of action to help bring this community back together. Thank you.
Thank you. Saritarian?
Hello, I want to thank the city council for making me feel unsafe in my community. I've been here for ten years, and I feel, I felt safe here until this past summer. The flag ban, the vandalism, the harassment of my friends and neighbors is scary. Now the council wants to enact, now the council that enacted these policies wants to limit free speech. By violating the Open Meetings Act, you are telling residents, I don't care about you or what you have to say. So since the emails from last meeting were not read, I guess I would give an update since it doesn't seem like the council cares. There was an email from the Fair Housing Center regarding fair housing awareness and resources and services offered. That's for everyone in the city, including city staff. There was an email asking not to adopt lock safety, and there were eight emails asking the council to reconsider the resolution, violating the Open Meetings Act, and reaffirming your commitment to Open Meetings Act. It is your job to listen to residents talk at these meetings. If you don't like it, you can step down or be voted out.
Ricky Pokai, is that? Is that, how do you pronounce your last name?
Pokoi.
Pokoi, okay.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm actually calling up on behalf of PLAB Post Six at Evelyn and McDougall, one of businesses that's stuck in the redoing of the streets. Behind this establishment has been deteriorating alleyway. Today, this afternoon, a UPS truck got stuck. They had to call in for a big truck to get them out of it. We've complained about the sinkhole right there for a couple of years. We do know that cameras have been put in the alleyway to take a look. I talked to Charlie Smith with Hennessy, who's in charge of the program right here with the street repair. He said, right now, that's out of his hands. I said, Charlie, you're a hundred feet away. Let's look and see. They had Hutch out there, they had the other guys there. He said, right now, it's out of their hands, they're doing the street work. Something needs to be done there. This afternoon, just after twelve o'clock, I took about eight pictures of cars coming down a slope, damaging their front end because they cannot get down Evelyn Street. Evelyn is blocked off at Mitchell, at the alleyway, so the only way out is through the alleyway south of Evelyn between Mitchell and McDougall. Last year, when they did the water lines, they converted Mitchell and Evelyn to two-way streets during the construction. It's a little bit of a headache, but it would make things a lot easier. Earlier this year, there was a DTE truck, Performance Services, when we lost power in the alley. He got stuck in the back. Something needs to be done. It's a sinkhole that's been happening there for a number of years, and it's just, I'm gonna say perfume on an animal. It's just, you know, patched over, patched over, but the past few years, it hasn't been done. This afternoon, I, you know, did send the city manager a picture of it and said something needs to be done. You know, he said he will speak to, you know, the same people I did. Talking to Charlie this afternoon, he said he's waiting on the decision for Max and the police department if they can make those two streets two-way streets during the time of the construction. They're in favor of it so they can block people going onto Evelyn so this way here, they don't have to worry about somebody getting through the barricades and getting their vehicle damaged by equipment that's out there. I just want to bring it up. This needs to be handled. I was talking to DPW, I did talk to Max, you know, I'm just saying, you know, it needs to be taken care of. I know that there's a whole lot of, you know, construction going on in the city, but to have people damaging their cars, enough is enough.
Thank you. Thank you.
As Mr. Pokai said, he did bring this to me this afternoon, well, actually, morning in the evening. I already signed out the potential issue with the sewer behind Post Six there to be investigated further, so we'll try to figure out what's going on there. It was the first time it's been brought to my attention. As far as the two-way traffic, I'm not sure. I'll go out there tomorrow and take a look myself and see if it's conducive, if it's a better idea or not.
Head one, head one? Oh, you wanted to speak for public hearing. I apologize. I'll get back to you on that one. Abraham Abdallah?
Yes.
Did you want to speak now?
No.
Three minutes.
Three minutes, no problem. Hello and good evening. My name is Ibrahim Abdallah. I've been living in Hamtramck over twenty years. It took me eighteen years to buy a house for me and my family. I have five kids. I never, never in this twenty years see a house tax over a thousand, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred the most. When I buy my house, my taxes came up eighteen hundred. I was complaining about it. So my kids, they grow up, we decide to build two rooms in the back of my house for my kids. I find out my taxes went up four thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. So basically, I'm renting the house. It's not my house, it's the state. The last eighteen hundred, so my house is six, sixty-five hundred. I don't know who's the reason to raise the taxes, the city, the state, and what's going on with this? I was so happy to push my family together because I was tired twenty-one years in Hamtramck, rent from house to the other house. When I find this me and my family, basically right now, we are owning the house. We're not the owner. We have to pay the five fifty of a month for two rooms in the back, two rooms in the front, two bathrooms, and one bedroom upstairs. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for everybody, and I don't know what I told you.
Yeah, I mean, I'll have to look it up and see what's going on. I can't address all these files.
Wadi Al Zrabi?
Yes. And I plead for this. First, I'm sorry, full language, but I speak Arabic. In the beginning, I live in Hamtramck, ten years. I achieve serenade. Tax two thousand twenty-two, yeah, it's me, Shuri. And the massive way, two rooms, the Haq al Kizan, the Batailb, and Da'fal Bay, and as, al Zadid. And the massive way, two rooms, and as, the tax, 2,000. I have a lot of money, for that reason, I came here today. I'm glad you're here, and I'm trying to manage the taxes a little bit, because I want to protect my family, and I want to live in the same house, not a separate space, not a separate way. Thank you.
Max, you want to take his information as well, same issue? Yusuf Abdullah?
Good evening, everybody. Well, it's actually the same problem. My name is Yusuf Abdullah, I've been in Hamtramck for over 25 years, then moved, died in mom. So I decided to build my own house, move in, I bought a lot from the city of Hamtramck on 2022. And so I built the house, the house is not even 50% done, so my estimated taxes were 35% done, with 6700, so 6,700 partially done, which is, he saw that, came downstairs, like, one month ago, he told me it's only 35% done, so that's how much tax is going to be, so 35% done, 6,700. I want a, you know, new house, bigger house, you know, because I used to live with mom and dad, and it was over the family, I got kids, so we all come in the same house together. But my brother, my brother has the same thing, same problem, he had addition in the back, my cousin down here, he didn't do, no addition, nothing at all in the back, they raised his taxes almost $1,000, no reason. But this is not what they told us when I first got the lot, I got the lot from the city of Hamtramck, they did not mention nothing about the taxes. She knows me, that's my problem. So I'm afraid now, when the house is done, how much they're going to charge me taxes? It's 6,700 right now, 35% done, how much they're going to charge me when it's 100% done? And that's it.
Justin Disaf?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Naim is on his laptop, I think it's quite rude, would you ask him to pay attention?
Thank you, Justin. Sarah Smith?
Hi, I'm Sarah Smith, I'm an organizer in Detroit for Babe House, it's a national solidarity network, it's for QT BIPOC, which is queer, trans, black, indigenous people of color. We focus on the rights of QT BIPOC and a platform to create awareness for those rights and inclusivity, and we prepare events, platforms for those type of people. I have a lack of clearance, clarity when it comes to inclusivity everywhere I go, as a black person, as a black trans person, and I'll make it short, since I only have three minutes, but I have noticed the inclusivity levels of, like, privilege has to do with a lot of the ways that the organizing comes about with the environment that you grow up in, and I would like to say that Hamtramck has taught me a lot growing up, and I'm not originally from Hamtramck, but I do respect Hamtramck. As someone that explored the city at a young age, as far as inclusivity, there's not enough of that around as far as centers and a lot of resources for even homeless people that are in the QT BIPOC community. So what I'm saying to you is, let's create solidarity with a lot of the resources that we can have by making sure that when we have access to funds, that we create, like, with the jobs that you have, and with the jobs that the city provides, we can provide a lot more promising reactions on how we can expand the city in a brighter, in a brighter way. So as far as solidarity, I don't see it here in the way I see it in different places that I've been. So what I mean by that is that Hamtramck is very small, I understand that, but it also requires more resources for the people who have been here for a long time, that if you provide that trickle-up effect, or trickle-down effect, at least, for the economic standpoint, with the people that are at the lowest scale, then there would be more opportunities for people who are in middle class to be able to function better in their middle-class area.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Mariah? Can you pronounce your last name for me?
Habenar.
Habenar Habenar, three minutes.
Today, I'd like to speak on the limit of public comment. My understanding is that it feels more like a one-way conversation when people are just given allotted time to do this. To stand up here anyway, takes a lot of, a lot of gall to just come up here and speak to your representatives. A lot of people feel unwelcome to do that, and this is the place to do that, and by placing more restrictions on it, it makes people, like, feel like there's less access to say what they want to say. And even as we were in here today, the man was speaking about his very own street, you cut him off at three minutes, I'm sure you had a little bit more to say. These issues affect all of us, not just the people who live on that very street, it affects everybody in Hamtramck. And to limit the amount of time that you have to speak on that creates a barrier between me and you. And the barrier between us should, like, not be there, it should be an open dialogue, you know? And then it should be more of like, a conversation with a response, you know? So I feel like these limitations are really keeping it from, people from saying what they want to say.
Thank you. Sandra Disaf?
I'm not going to take three minutes, I just wanted to say that everybody should be able to speak and say what they have to say, and that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comment.
Okay, thank you. I just want to address some confusion that's going on out there regarding the tax. Some people I heard, they accuse us of raising the tax, we did not raise the tax, the government didn't do anything about the tax. This is a property value that went up, and then the assessor, the assessment, you know, is going up, so if there's any unfairness or injustice in the assessment, we can address it. That's why I appointed a subcommittee of three people from the council to work on this. They will coordinate with the assessor, with the tax department, with the city manager, and see how, how can we solve this problem. I, I'm not happy with what I hear from the people, that the tax went up in high amount, three times or four times the original amount, which is not reasonable. It's not accepted that you pay 6,000 and your neighbor pays 1,000 and you're getting the same service. You know, yes, you moved here, you like to look in Hamtramck, so we should work on people and see how we can help them. I'm not happy with that, and this gentleman here is paying 6,000 something for 30% of the construction done, so when he complete the house, it seems like it's going to go up to 19,000. Who wants to live in Hamtramck and pay 19,000? So just to, you know, clear the confusion, we did not take any decision to raise the tax. In fact, we can't do it without the consent and the vote of the people. They have to vote if we decide to raise the tax, but we don't need to raise the tax. We are doing fine with our budget, and we will try to help people, especially the new homeowners. I am not happy with what I hear, the stories, and I think we should come up with a solution, even if we have to come up with some exception, because it's not going to hurt to help the new homeowners, since the people who own the houses for so long, they paid $1,000 or 1,500, so if you help that person who pays 6,000, it's not going to hurt anybody. I think it's fair enough to welcome anyone. And I know the houses are going high in an unacceptable way, but it's people who come from out of the state, and yes, they have money, and according to the prices in their states, California or New York, it's nothing for them. 300,000 is compared to the houses they buy here, for a million or so, it's nothing. So we should not assess the value of the houses based on these exaggerated prices. I think we should be taking that into consideration, and look at the house, how old is it, 100,000? 100 year? And, I mean, the space is limited, so the assessment should be reasonable, not with the exaggerated and the overpriced houses. So we are working on that, and we will try to help you as much as we can.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I just want to bring a point out to this. I want all our real city agents to be honest with their client. You know, before you close in the house, find out from the city how much tax is going to be, instead of giving them lump sum, tax amount, and selling the house, putting your profit in your pocket, and put these people on this struggle. So I request all our guest agents to be honest with the people when you deliver them.
Thank you, and I would add just another thing with, regarding, you know, promoting tolerance and acceptance in our city. I, you know, like Josh mentioned, I have, I have a meeting coming with them next week, so my door is open for anyone who requests to meet, I'm not closing my doors in front of anyone. We want to live in peace and harmony with each other, and anyone who wants to discuss a problem, I welcome anyone to come to my office, wherever they want, unconditional meetings. So we are working to de-escalate any kind of tension in the city. And like I said, with the restriction of time, I'm not supporting that, and I will use my power at the end of the meeting, if there's someone who hasn't spoken, I will suspend rules and let them speak or her. Unless there's like 100 people waiting out there, we have to do something about that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just want to add regarding the tax property subcommittee, we actually had a meeting with our assessor, and also our city manager, try to find out any ways that we can explain to our residents regarding property tax, the reason for the increase, but we will inform them, we are actually working as a subcommittee. Hopefully, we have another meeting to sit down with our assessor and our city manager, and try to get more information, and see what we're able to do as council mayor to kind of help our residents with their taxes, and especially the ones who are building brand new houses in our city.
Thank you. And you also have an opportunity to discuss that during the meetings of the assessor board, for it, they have those meetings where they, you can appeal, and they ask you for some documents, and then they help you out. It happens, I think, in the beginning of the year or so. Find out when they can come up with your documents and ask for help. Thank you. We'll move to the next section, which is the council's agenda, this is approved, this is a motion with no discussion. We have approval of minutes from the September 12, 2023 Regional City Council meeting, B approval of full voice registered dating September 26, 2023, C approval of pre-approved expenditure date ending September 26, 2023, D resolution 2023-145 approving reappointment of Francis Sims as a commissioner to the Hamtramck Housing Commission.
Motion? I'll say second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Now we move to the public hearing. Then we have resolution 2023-125B approving secondary reading and public hearing of the amendment to Lumpkin rezoning, amendments to the Hamtramck zoning.
Motion? Second.
Okay, so.
Can we have a motion to open the hearing? Yep, this was a motion to start the public hearing, so 7:53. Hedwan Hedwan?
Hello, everybody. Hedwan Hedwan, I'm here speaking on behalf of my family who lives on Lumpkin and Goodson, so right next to Metropolitan Bakery. I wanted to recommend that you guys definitely approve their plans, you know, they've been a longtime, you know, partner of the city of Hamtramck, they're foundational to what we do here, and the street always smells like fresh bread, so I really do appreciate that. A couple of comments, I would say, when it comes to the material selection for the fence, you know, towards Danforth and Goodson, I just ask you guys to be mindful of, you know, what material you select. If you wouldn't want it in front of your house, I just hope that you respect, you know, you wouldn't put it in front of ours. The other thing is, when it comes to any type of landscaping or greenery, you know, we welcome all types. DTE has cut down a lot of trees on Lumpkin, so there's not a whole lot of shading on that street, so we welcome any and all types of shading. The other thing that I think is really vital and important to the plans, and I see that you guys made this amendment in your recent plan, is the main access point is going to be off St. Albans. I will say that there's two elementary schools that drop off kids on Lumpkin.
You just asked the council.
Sorry, the school buses run the routes on Lumpkin, so I think it's really important, if they can use St. Albans, you know, it's a Detroit-owned street, they can beat it up as much as they like, try to keep Lumpkin as flat as possible, and I think it just makes sense ergonomically, so do appreciate them making that change. One last thing I will say, and this is just, just throwing it out there, throwing my hand in the ring, if there was any way to add a window or some type of point of service, I would love to buy fresh bread. This is a community that is very carb-heavy when it comes to their diet, so I think it makes a lot of sense. It would be a very unique experience in the city of Hamtramck if you're able to buy fresh bread from Metropolitan Bakery, I think a lot of people would welcome that idea. I've heard rumors of people being able to maybe purchase bread, but it seems like shaky, I don't really want to go up to a warehouse and ask, but I'd be more than happy to do it. I think, I really do think it would, would be, you know, a little, it would be, it'd be pretty cool to be able to buy some fresh bread in the city of Hamtramck. So that's all I wanted to say, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, that's all for public comments, for public hearing. Can I get a motion to close public hearing?
I'll say second.
And it is 7:56. And can I have a motion to discuss the resolution?
Motion? Second.
Who's second, I'm sorry?
Mr. Chair. Any discussion?
Anyone from the Metropolitan?
Sure, I can speak first, that's what we do.
Yeah, Karen, yeah.
The lady who's behind the whole thing.
Hi, Mayor, hello, Council, great to be here presenting this. So we have two items related to this project on the agenda. This is the rezoning of five parcels, and then later on is the site plan approval. They're separate processes, but they're both related to the same project. This is a rezoning from residential to industrial. The land is owned by Metro Baking and is just north of the property. There's a report that's on board docs. This is the third meeting on this topic. We presented the rezoning first with the planning commission, they recommended it. We were here two weeks ago, and now this is the third meeting on this topic. This community and economic development staff doesn't believe that on that side of Lumpkin, there really is a demand for future residential development. I don't know of anybody who's contacted me that I want to build a house there, definitely on that side that already has a lot of industrial uses. So I don't see anything, I think the best use would be to rezone it, as well, our 2020 master plan talks about the need to retain and expand industrial facilities, and just make sure they're able to continue to thrive and grow in Hamtramck. It doesn't really give a lot of specifics in the master plan, but it just talks about that as an important goal for the city, also noting in the plan that most job growth comes from the expansion of businesses in cities, not from new businesses moving into cities, and they do plan on adding new jobs. So I will present on the actual site plan in terms of the routes for traffic and the landscaping and all that in the next portion of, when we talk about this, but this is really rezoning the parcels. If we don't rezone it, we can't really approve the site plan either, because they wouldn't be allowed to build this on a residential zone. And also, George, the owner of the company, is here to speak as well.
Thanks, appreciate your time. Mayor, council members, thanks, thanks for your time today. I also appreciate, you know, the public support. Owner, resident, CEO of Metropolitan Baking Company. My family's had roots on Lumpkin since 1945. We were two Hamtramck homes, we had a small mechanics garage in the back, and now we are one of the largest wholesale baking companies in the region, delivering bread to every state and country. So 100 trucks leaving our plant each day, canvassing, we're producing wrapping at Metropolitan Baking Company, about 200. We're producing wrapping at Metropolitan Baking Company, about two hundred and seventy, two hundred and eighty packages a minute for twenty hours a day, six days a week. Really proud of where we are, really proud of our community. We've had opportunities to take our facility and kind of say, hey, instead of this, putting this much investment, instead of putting millions and millions of dollars into Hamtramck, into our current facility, we could put that elsewhere into a big building, big block and just kind of restart and almost make it more efficient. But we're proud of where we're at. We love being in this community. So we decided to say, hey, instead of kind of coming at the the city council and saying, can you pay, can you help us out here? We're not doing any of that. We're not asking for tax abatements. My father and I, we're family funding this, we're saying this, what we're gonna do here is put a about about roughly twenty-seven, thirty thousand square foot facility. It's gonna add about twenty to twenty-five jobs. And currently that facility is supporting about two hundred and seventy families daily. About roughly ninety-five to a hundred and ten, depending on the season, um, full-time employees. And then we've got a hundred and ten independent distributors that are, a lot of them are located within five miles of our facility. So the majority of our our business is, our our employees are within five to ten miles of Hamtramck. We're really proud of that. We're proud of being one of the largest employers in Hamtramck. Um, so to to just address a little bit of um the discussion, that north end of of the facility, where we're going to be adding this addition. Um, we are gonna be basically, instead of having those docks and and the trucks coming onto Lumpkin, which we we consider residential, we've always been kind of that hybrid residential, you know, industrial. Um, and obviously we've expanded it to about twenty acres. But we're gonna be just saying, hey, let's cap this off. Let's, let's not take the trucks off residential. Let's take them off St. Albans. So it's not only gonna be, it's not only gonna get rid of a bit of that eyesore where you've got fifty trucks sitting there, some of them just kind of idle, some of them storage trucks. You're gonna have a nice new building, you know, good-looking, you know, we're putting a lot of effort, a lot of money into this. And um, we can put up some nice landscaping. We're gonna filter the trucks down Lumpkin. And um, it's gonna be safer for the community. It's gonna be just uh, it's gonna be a nice, good-looking, you know, facility that's frankly, hopefully gonna be here for my kids and their kids. And um, and hopefully, you know, in twenty, thirty years, we've got another hundred employees working at Metropolitan Baking Company. So this is, it's vital to our success as a company, um, this addition. It's gonna add about thirty to thirty-five percent capacity to what we're currently doing on our Bund and Row line. Um, and it's gonna make us capable of fending off some of the outstate competition. So it's critically important to maintaining Metropolitan's, Metropolitan's health, our employees' health, and really kind of, uh, you know, our our trajectory towards success. So I I appreciate, you know, your consideration. Um, and we've always, you know, we're, we like being a good neighbor. We've had a good relationship with the city of Hamtramck for for close to eighty years and we want to continue that. So, thank you. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I don't consider a Hamtramck resident, you do priority on their job, on your job, uh, highly process.
Appreciate that.
I already know someone, many of them actually were working from Hamtramck at your facility.
Sure.
And they're like it is, uh, they've been working for almost ten years.
Absolutely. And it'd be great, you know, if someone's made there, you know, a few, uh, six months, a few years. Typically, we see the retention. We've got a lot of twenty, thirty-year employees that are all, you know, within Hamtramck. So, um, and the diversity obviously over the time has changed, you know, from from, it used to be Polish. It it used to be Polish town. Now we've got a mixture of, you know, Yemenis, Bangladeshis, Bengalis, you know, it's, um, it's, and they're all incredibly hard workers and we work together. So we've been proud of our workforce.
Mr. Chair. I want to thank you for for being here. You know, I'm glad that you guys are extending in our city and our town. I grew up in Hamtramck. Like Mr. Edlund said, we used to smell that fresh bread. We're not able to buy this bread. I thought, you know, if you guys are coming to tell you guys to bring us some bread.
Sure. I didn't want to look like there's collusion taken.
I didn't want to bribe you guys.
But so we've always told the police, uh, you know, the police and then we've always told the the firemen, you know, hey, swing on by, pick it up. We want to take care of our our own and take care of our cities. So the the only situation about, you know, having that potential thrift store, we're so industrial. We've got trucks coming back and forth. We just don't have the necessary, you know, facility for that kind of window without the potential for liability at the moment. But hey, down the, but there are about eight hundred local stores selling our product. And I can tell you, it's the freshest product, you know, in in the state. So.
I'm happy, you know, you guys are extending it. There's only one thing, as as you guys are gonna build that building on Lumpkin. As you know, there's a mosque on St. Albans and they also own a lot next to the, next to those lots.
Yep.
Uh, and and they and they usually usually use it during their holiday, where they have females kind of pray there and have fun. So I'm hoping that you guys will have kind of way of, you know, any kind of fencing or something that will kind of, you know.
Without a doubt.
Makes it looks.
So so um. Yeah.
Right. But like a nice fencing or something that.
Sure. Anything that's. So I can tell you, we take pride in our property. Um, and we are, we're not gonna put, you know, um, just something hodgepodge up. Hey, I've got my name on every loaf of bread. I've got my name on the bill. We're gonna make sure that facility looks nice. And frankly, that mosque has grown. We, it's been substantial. Uh, and they've become a great neighbor of ours. Um, initially, you know, we were, we didn't fully understand, you know, the customs and and, you know, but as we, you know, um, got, you know, as as employees from Metropolitan Baking Company, um, started kind of teaching us a little bit more of that, you know, we started understanding. And we want, we're, we wanted good neighbors. Um, and they've been great neighbors to us. So it'll be, we'll make sure they're taken care of.
Well, you guys all the best. Can't wait to.
Appreciate that. Really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right, guys.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
B, yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three one thirty-five B approved.
All right. All right, we move to the new business now and we have uh resolution twenty twenty-three dash one forty-six approving the purchase of mini split cooling unit for the second floor IT room.
Motion? I'll second.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't think we need to discuss.
Oh, real quick. Mr. Mayor, at your behest, I I add this back on here. Uh, I told John to stay home. Is that bad luck? That's all I have.
Can't say you're not a good salesperson?
He's got other. No, he's actually got other.
Someone already spoke about that.
Yeah. We beat this one down, so.
I mean, yeah, we can.
Yeah, might as well just.
I mean, I feel really odd right here in here. Don't you guys?
The problem wasn't here that AC is constantly running and you hear it.
We can always reconsider an old resolution that failed, right?
I actually asked him to bring this back because I changed my mind. I I broke the tie last time and I said no. Then this group didn't pay for my dinner, so I changed my mind. Just kidding. So, yes, um.
Makes sense.
I think it would pass because.
You're, you ain't gonna vote today.
One is missing, so.
Can we vote?
I'll just decide. I really do need this one.
Let's get into action. I think, Mr. CEO. No, no, I I just said I'm here to answer any question that you guys might.
Just pretend he's John standing in front of you.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, no.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
No.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution one, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three one forty-six approved, three to two.
Thank you.
So somebody changed his mind.
Not yet.
No. No, I mean, last time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To switch their votes, which is.
Was it?
Yeah, Musa was yes last time. Then he changed his mind. You were gonna.
Yes, you changed your mind.
All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. Uh, the next one is resolution twenty twenty-three uh one forty-seven approving site plan for expansion of Metropolitan Baking at eight five seven nine Lumpkin Street.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is the companion to the one we just did at the public hearing. Uh, unless you had more questions, I don't know that we need to revisit it.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
I can come up with any questions.
Yeah. Just regarding the taxes, I know they're not tax abatement, but are you going to combine all those five properties? Are they going to have one tax?
I believe so. That's my understanding.
Or are they going to have a five individual property taxes?
We're requiring them to combine the parcels. So it's one development and it'd be one bill.
And the tax rate will be based on the current of property value?
That's what the expansions always go up. So it will, it would go up.
So you mean you're adding an entire building as one property, correct?
It'll be one, one parcel ID and one tax.
The current, they currently have a facility and then they're expanding, so that whole is one facility with one parcel.
One person.
All right, let's move.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Uh, Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three one forty-seven approved.
All right, thank you. The next one is resolution. Next one is uh twenty twenty-three one forty-eight approving purchase of uh automated external defibrillator.
I'll make a motion. I'll second. Mr. Mayor, we have a police chief here to speak on this. This is sort of a collab between the police, fire, and he pushing them as well.
This agenda item is requesting the city council approve the purchase of fifteen automated external defibrillators to be used by the police department and other first responders. Um, typically we have found that our officers are usually on the scene before anyone else as they assess the scene. Um, there's been numerous situations where they have had to perform CPR and and other type medical um situations. So we think it'd be very beneficial to have these AEDs available in scout cars. Um, I do want to thank Officer Christopher Fay, who has kind of put this proposal together for us and brought this to my attention and the city managers, and also the fire chief for his collaboration and rapid response for assisting us with the pricing. The price to purchase is approximately twenty-four thousand dollars to purchase fifteen and these would come from narcotic forfeiture funds and would not impact the overall. So I'm asking you to approve that purchase.
Trying to make it better and save.
So we need fifteen of them?
Yes, so we figure we would strategically place some of them in the station and other areas. The city has been taking steps to put them in city hall. This would make them readily available in the police department. Um, putting them in different scout cars strategically, putting them in a couple detective cars because often they're out on the scene on things. Um, so I just think that we have um the ability to add different ones rather than maybe that car is busy on something else and we have it in a different car. It's unable to predict often which car is gonna show up first or, you know, this um.
How much you both said both?
Approximately twenty-four thousand dollars. They're about fifteen hundred dollars a piece. Um, and you add everything, so.
That's it, pricing. We'll save, we'll save this a lot of life. That's what.
As you see, we're starting to place them around city hall. This would help to put them in the police department and on the road as well.
Yeah, I agree. I I.
That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three one forty-eight approved.
All right, thank you. The next one is resolution twenty twenty-three one forty-nine approving amendment to the memo of understanding agreement with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services regarding the low-income housing water assistance program.
I'm in motion. Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is basically just a a re-upping of the program we have ongoing to help our residents. It's one of the the many programs we offer at uh the DPW window when residents come in and need help. So uh, it'll be a yearly thing we bring back to you.
Have to clarify before or how this work?
Yeah. No, well, we we basically just signed the new agreement with them, saying that we're continuing to participate as well.
No, he means the, he means the residents.
Oh, yeah, it's generally a a form process. Um, I I don't know the specifics of this one, but every one of them, they gotta, they're required to fill out something, but.
Yeah.
What did the benefit get given?
Uh, this one, I believe, was water assistance. Um, I don't know how much it gives. Um, because there's a number of them and I I kind of mix them up a little bit, but um, I know there's several and this is one of many that they could sign up for that assists with water. Um, I know it is considerable. Um, I want to say at least in the few hundred dollar range, probably a lot more than that. But I mean, I can get you specifics next time. I actually didn't anticipate being asked that, so I didn't want.
If I may add, address this a little bit, because I have helped a lot of the residents with the RAP program similar to this one. So I think first, uh, they consider twenty-five dollars off of your bill every month. And sometimes if you are very, you know, deliquent with the bills for two years and they have, they'll pay a lump sum to restore your service. So this program is great for the residents who need help.
Third one.
Thank you for the assist, Councilman. I have the details on this one.
So that lady who came last meeting to complain about, maybe she's qualified to get some help.
Our our DPW um pretty much tells everybody who's in town, they 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 assist in walking them through the process too. They're pretty good about it. Plus councilmen are always bringing people to help them, so.
All right, so we can go ahead and.
Okay, Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
I can vote for something I don't know. Like it?
I will get you the details.
It's, there's the details in board docs.
No details.
There's a, there's a.
If the people they did the agreement here don't know what's the benefit, how are they gonna agree with them? It's there, it's there.
It's in board docs.
My point is no.
No?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three one forty-nine approved.
Next one is resolution twenty twenty-three one fifty approving amendment number one to the agreement between the county of Wayne and the city of Hamtramck.
Motion? Second.
Mr. Mayor, this is one of the amended funding sources we have for the bathroom renovations at Veterans Park. Um, the county basically has given us fifty thousand dollars for it. Um, there is a timetable on this one. Um, it's just because it's, we've been waiting so long for all these grants to finally process through and it's such a complex process, uh, that we just need to execute an extension with them. So we anticipate this should be the last extension and we're we're getting ready to gear up and move pretty quickly on this now, so.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution twenty twenty-three one fifty approved.
Thank you. Next one, added resolution twenty twenty-three one fifty-one approving amendment of general provision governing the Hamtramck City Council.
Motion? I'll second.
All right. Uh, okay, Mr. Attorney, can I address that?
Yeah, so after speaking with the ACLU, trying to, I know you guys want to address the, you know, the concerns of the citizens. So we have uh come up with something I think that addresses everybody's concerns, but also helps us to limit excessive meetings that that go, start to spiral till one thirty-two o'clock because that that actually is absurd and also not contemplated by the Open Meetings Act. It specifically discourages long meetings like that. So we have to find a a happy medium that allows people to talk, but also helps us to stop from being here until however long. Uh, or or for letting somebody sort of filibuster a meeting or people filibuster meetings that we can't get to agenda items because really what we're trying to do here is get to the city business. And so, so we're trying to do. So the the changes, um, basically here allow for a half an hour, uh, thirty-minute maximum before the agenda items uh have been completed. And then a uh, it's unlimited after that except for a couple of things. First, the council is able to vote and and stop the public comment if it's getting excessive. But also, if it's about, you know, we've had a couple in the past, but and and the Open Meetings Act in the state of Michigan, they, you know, this is the the guidance they provide is that we can have um each side. So if there's two sides, two viewpoints, for example, we've had, you know, pro Pride Flag, anti Pride Flag or whatever. And so each side would pick their spokesperson and then that person would have five minutes at the end of the meeting. Each person would have five minutes to speak. That way we avoid having four or five hours of the same viewpoint over and over again. We get a summary from one and the other. And that's the guy. We get a summary from one and the other, and that's the guidance from the state. I don't think it's perfect. I don't, but it's what we've got from them, and I think it meets everybody's standard. Also, with regards to the email comment, they will be read, but they, you know, they were cut off after, they're not after the first thirty minutes. So any that are cut off would be put in a meeting minutes.
Alright, any further discussion? One second.
Alright, Councilman El Samiri?
No.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2023-151 approved.
Alright, thank you. Alright, the next one, and the last one, resolution 2023-152 approving contract for the general liability insurance policy. Motion, second.
Mr. Mayor, we have our controller here who's been working on this diligently with a brief presentation for you on this.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. This insurance renewal is expiring on the 31st of October. And that's when we need to get a renewal for the next year. We've been working with the insurance companies for the last, at least two, three months to try and, you know, wrap up the renewal for next year. There's a lot of information that is acquired by the insurance companies and the reinsurers, which include, you know, all the details about all the employees that are here. So they, they look at all the payroll, they look at all the budget that we prove for next year. They look at, you know, all the employees in the police department, especially because of the liability that is assigned to law enforcement and the issues regarding, you know, police liability. So, you know, it's, it's a long runout process that went on for at least two, three months. And finally, we got a call from the insurance companies. If I just, if you can run, if you can put up the.
Sure. Bear with me, just one more.
There you go. Okay, so as I was getting the background, the insurance for this year would start from October to October and go until 30th September next year. We use a broker, currently it is Hutton Locker Group, which, you know, markets our insurance to all the insurance companies on our behalf and then gets the proposal and submits the proposal to us. We sit down with Hutton Locker Group to decide on the coverage based on which we receive the proposals. It gets all the information from the city and passes it on to the insurance companies. And then, once it has submitted the proposal, we then bring it to the council for approval. And once it's approved, we then give approval to the broker to go ahead and renew the policies. Now, the first thing that we need to understand is the risk profile of the city. What are the things that insurance companies consider in order to assess the risk for anybody? So for Hamtramck, our risk profile starts off next page, hold on.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that they look at is that the city of Hamtramck is in close proximity to Detroit, so that is a risk factor. They also look at the financial condition of the city, especially the historical condition of the city in terms of, you know, how the city has been managed and what are the issues related to it and all that. Then their concern over law enforcement-related exposures, and we've had lawsuits in the past because of excessive force and other issues. They look at the lawsuit history related to the city in terms of various claims that have been filed against the city. They look at the historical crime statistics of the area, look at the image of Hamtramck. Lately, the image has not been very positive in terms of different issues popping up. We all know, aware, we are aware of all those issues and the historical experience of trying to insure the city. So these, these are some of the risk factors that they, they look at while selling and marketing our proposal for our city. If we look at loss history, because I asked them specifically as to give us an idea as to what kind of losses, losses, you know, the insurance companies have had, what kind of payouts they've made to the city, or, you know, the claims. So from 2014 to 2019, the city was insured by Agornaut Insurance Trident, which was a, you know, more popular name. And it had sixteen claims with a total payout of about $508,046 in any sense. Then we changed insurance companies to Liberty Mutual from 2019 till today. So from 2019 to '23, we've had twenty-eight claims with a payout of $273,755. Before 2013, there were two police brutality cases which were, you know, filed in which one officer had abused two people in two separate incidents, one after the other. One payout was zero, but the other payout was $225. So even though the loss history that they had given me was since 2014, but this history is still available to the insurance company when they consider the insurance for the city. Now, what are the changes that have taken place, next please, that, that have taken place this year in the insurance business? So there's a lot of instability and flots in insuring the public sector entities and especially the government entities in the insurance business. The careers are, insurance companies are reducing their limits and trying to leave the public sector business totally. So one of the things that has, it has very significantly is that Liberty Mutual, which was our main insurers, they used to insure anything up to 10 million in coverage. They have reduced that coverage from 10 million to 5 million. And that means that we have to then go out and shop for coverage from 5 to 10 million. And then, once they were, you know, covering 10 million, then we, you know, we were having additional coverage of another 10 million, so total coverage was 20 million. For those coverages, we had two separate companies, one covering from 10 million to 15, and the third one covering from 15 to 20 million. So this time around, we needed to get first from 5 to 10, then 10 to 15, and then 15 to 20. So there were four insurance companies involved. In addition to that, some of the insurance companies totally declined and were not interested in, you know, providing any insurance to Hamtramck Travelers, Trident. MMRMA is a governmental entity of Michigan, which has in the past refused insurance to Hamtramck and declined so this year as well. Michigan Municipal League also declined insurance this year. So because of all of these changes, you know, the broker had to go out and market in some other, to some other insurance companies. Next, please. So they, they went and, you know, Liberty quoted, which is our incumbent carrier, but it reduced the limit from 10 million to 5 million. Allied Public Risk, we did, we filed next year, but they were not interested. Then UCD and Hudson Primary recently pulled out of public entity space for deductible-based accounts, non-renewed this program. HCC, they declined, not interested in quoting to Hamtramck. Travelers declined, Trident declined, MMRMA declined, and MML declined. So these, we had very little options available when, you know, whatever we got finally. What we did get was we got Arch Insurance Company, which quoted the first excessive layer from 5 to 10 million. Then Starstone quoted for 10 to 15, another 5 million. Berkeley Entity, Public Entity also quoted, you know, 5 million for 10 to 15, but their quote was higher than Starstone, so they were not considered. And then Lexington AIG, they quoted from 15 to 20, 5 billion. Next. Okay, this is just a comparison for, from last year. As you can see, Hutton Locker is the same as, you know, they are the brokers. Liberty Mutual, again, the primary insurer, last year it was insuring 10 billion, this year they've quoted for 5. Arch Speciality was last year the second excessive insurer. This year, they are the first excessive insurer, 5. Then we have Merkel last year, which was the third, and then Star Speciality, we have the second, and then Lexington Insurance Company, which is the third excessive insurers this year. Next. So this is a comparison of last year's insurance code compared to this year's insurance code. As you can see, significant increase overall, you know, 45, 30% in some cases, in some cases higher, you know. So property went up from 28,000 to 42,000, general liability, including cyber suite, sexual abuse, employment-based liability, employer-based liability, 65,000, that remained almost the same, it went down already, 60,000. Business auto went up 104 to 130. A lot of this is because of the new vehicles that we added, we added the sleep sleeper, and we added, you know, police cars and stuff. So that went up because of the additional equipment. Commercial umbrella is the umbrella that is provided by Liberty Mutual. So last year they quoted 48,000 for 10 million. This year they quoted 46,000 for 15 million, you know, so, for 5 million. So from 10 million, they went down to 5 million, but the quote remains the same. So, you know, that went up significantly. Crime, this similar amount. Directors and officers, you know, liability insurance, 7,000 to 12,000. Employment practice liability, 33,000 to 30,000. Law enforcement liability went up significantly from 37 to 81. Then the excessive liability, which we had last year from Arch. Arch was basically insuring us from 10 to, between 10 and 15 million for 5 million. So this time, they are insuring from 5 to 10 million. So there is a double hit or double exposure for them. One is that they have come down on the exposure, so, you know, anything over 5, they'll have to pay out. So their probability of payment increases and their risk increases. So based on that, their quote has gone up from 75 to 136,000. So that's significant jump because of the exposure. The second liability from 10 to 15 million, you can compare this to Arch's last year, you know, so 42,000 to 94,000. And then Lexington was not there last year, and this time from 15 to 20, it's 105,000. So from a total premium of 441, 851, we've gone up to 741, 651. So that's almost a $300,000 increase on our coverages. So now we've worked out a few options to consider. So the first line is basically telling us about the first, you know, last year's proposal. Coverage was 20 million, deductible is 100,000, amount was 444. This year's court, same coverage amount is 741. Option one is basically that we consider, you know, full coverage and we pay 741. Option two is we reduce the coverage by 10 million, and that will reduce our cost from 741 to 542. So almost $200,000 reduction. And then third is to consider 5 million as coverage, and that takes the cost down to 406 million.
Option four is. 406,000.
Sorry, 406,000, yeah. And option four is basically we just do the auto coverage and, you know, we don't cover anything else. It's almost like self-insurance. And option five is that we do self-insurance including auto. So, you know, those are the, those are the five options. I will tell you what our recommendation is, and then, you know, we can have a discussion. Our recommendation is to go with option three. We reduce the coverage from 20 million to 5 million. It will cost us 400,000. And in the meantime, we continue to look for better options with the insurance policy. The other direction that we can consider going in future, not right now, in future, is self-insurance. But that self-insurance would need to be looked at in much more detail. We would need to consider a lot of things. And when, when I talk about, you know, self-insurance, it doesn't mean that we're not going to have costs associated with it. What we would probably need to do is set up some sort of fund for insurance payments. So we set aside a certain amount of seed money to start with, and then every year we, you know, add on to that seed money until we get to a significant or substantial amount of money, which can act not, not only as a fund for insurance, but we can call it a fund for, you know, a sinking fund for future risks, which could support your general fund, which could support any major capital expenditure, which could support, you know, some sort of, whatever new initiative that the council may consider in future. And that's something that we can kind of set aside a certain amount of money every year for activities that will. But this is, this is a direction that I think we would need to do some more work on and consider.
Our hope, our hope is to continue with a plan here moving forward. Obviously, today we need a decision, and as Amir said, we're advocating for option three. That's the way we structured the actual resolution for this body today. But we're working out a bunch of options, one of which Amir said that we actually budget some seed money every year to put into fund to move towards self-insurance. We're also.
It's not just for self-insurance. I would say we, we move towards a sinking fund, where, you know, we, we put in money for any ready. I would say if we, we move towards a sinking fund, where, you know, we, we put in money for any ready day.
We're also exploring the idea of potentially partnering with other cities at a later date.
There are, there are cities which do self-insure. There are cities who come to self-insurance through a combination of multiple cities. They set up a fund and work through that. So there are multiple options available. I, I think, you know, up to five hundred thousand coverage, it was palatable. Now going to, you know, almost three quarters of a million, and tomorrow it might get to a million, it's becoming unpalatable. So we need to look at, you know, what, what other options we can consider.
So we were, we were hoping to try this out, and instead it went way in the other direction, out of our control completely, but, I mean, it's where it is.
Yeah, the, the insurance business, I've had a significant amount of experience working in the private sector, dealing with reinsurers, working with some of the big reinsurers like Lloyd's, the Swiss trees and the munitions, and I've, you know, gone and talked to them in Zookla and given presentations on my companies. It's a similar story that you try and face, because insurance companies, the reinsurers work worldwide. So if something happens in the U.S., it affects the premiums in the Middle East and India and Pakistan and some of the other countries, where no claims were filed. So this is how the, so if we have a lot of natural disasters, it is going to increase insurance for everybody in every area, which we've had lots all over the world this year. So, you know, these are the things that we have to consider when we're looking at insurance.
Unfortunately, I, I mean, I personally agree with this plan, it's totally fine with that, so.
We're actively working on it. We, Amir and I have been in conversations with not only over, but some other attorneys that are very familiar in this area, to see what our best option is moving forward. And we hope to put something together for this council that'll be a better plan in the future.
So no fault, was that a good idea? I'm, I'm, I'm with this. Regarding self-insurance, is there any cities that...
A lot of cities do it.
Detroit?
Detroit? It's a big city. You know, we have to look at our size, our capacity. There are a lot of cities who do it. So it's, the first question I ask the attorneys is, is it legally possible? And they assured us that it is legally possible, we can look into it. I didn't want to, you know, stand here and say something which I cannot legally do. So yes, there are cities that do self-insure, but, you know, every city is different. Their natural conditions are different, their experiences are different. Sometimes some cities become uninsurable, and they have no choice but to self-insure, you know. So it's, you, you can't really truly compare yourself to any city, you know, but, yes, I mean, there are cities who do that.
I'm relatively positive we were uninsurable at one time in the past. I can't speak from experience on it, but maybe there are some people we can consult, but I'm pretty sure we did.
Well, one of the things that you can look at is that MMRMA and MML, both government entities are not willing to take a response, you know, they're not quoting us, they're not insuring us. So from that perspective, it, it's difficult. And, you know, when you have insurance company, there are always going to be somebody who will try and insure you, but it comes at a cost. You know, in our case, you know, costs went up significantly.
I'm, I'm done with this. I think we should actually start planning.
Yeah, that's, that's the whole idea, that, you know, we, we look at all the options, we study the legality of the issues, we maybe talk to other cities who are doing it, see how it works with them, you know, if there is a group of cities who are handling it, you know, as a group, maybe we can join them. So, you know, there are a lot of things that we need to consider, but I think to start off, we can start off and have this going forward, and then whenever we are ready with, you know, a different proposal, we can bring it to the council, and, and at that time we can make a decision accordingly.
Mr. Chair? So I heard a lot of things, you know, you covered pretty much many things. I listened to you closely, but reduce to, from twenty million to five million now is... Do you attorney, our attorney is...
No, it's not.
It's, it's gonna be, like, we're taking large amount of, you know, payout to the five million. Would that be sufficient to take care of...
Let's, let's, let's... I can add, so in the last two decades, we haven't even approached anything near that. I think the largest one that I'm aware of was two million for a sewer, one decade ago, and that wasn't even covered.
Covered, you know. So sewer payments, like flooding and stuff like that, they don't pay, you know. So, and so the reason we, we considered five million was because of the fact that, you know, in the last ten years, you know, we have not reached that level of...
Not just last ten years, last fifty years.
I, I just don't want our resident to start with the broken sewer, or not the sewer to cover, it means something that is very big burden to us, and then we don't have the courage to...
You're absolutely right, that's why they have to...
I mean, insurance, I have a...
That's why they're working towards finding others.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm working towards, and, and, you know, when, when I say reduce from twenty million to five million, it's basically looking at the economics of twenty million versus five million. And that's why I identified all the options. So from twenty to ten, and then to five, even to zero, even just part of, you know. It's your choice, you guys can decide whichever options you feel we should go with. I mean, if you want, we can go with twenty million, but, you know, the cost is going to be seven hundred and forty-one thousand.
I mean, I see the significant premium exchanges to seven hundred and forty-one to four or six. That's a lot of money we're saving.
Yeah.
However, you know, on the other side, if the liability is very important, things happen.
We're solving more risk.
Business we're in.
Right, and, and the, the problem is that we did not see anything in the last ten years which came even close to, you know, ten million, oh, I mean, five million. So that's why we, we thought that, you know, we can start off by taking a risk over five million. And, you know, there was, there was, you know, when we talked to somebody, there was a suggestion that, you know, we cover ourselves for five million to twenty-five million, and let the insurance company cover above twenty-five million and below five million, you know. So there, there are all kinds of, you know, things that, that we can look at, you know.
We were trying to get more options, actually, but they limited.
Right now, this is what we have, you know. And that's why we are suggesting that, you know, we go with option three, which is, you know, five million, and then, you know, we look at and we study it in more detail. And, and if, honestly, if we find something, let's say in three months' time, you can always come back, cancel this insurance, do something else. There is a contract, it's a one-year contract, but you can always cancel the insurance.
They get a penalty or no?
That's possible.
I don't know, I don't know, honestly, I don't know.
Hopefully, there is, usually there is a company.
There's, more than likely is going to be, but we're...
Exploring everything, so we're...
Yeah, but I, I think it won't be, it won't be happening so soon, soon anyway. It'll take us a lot of time to...
Councilman El Samiri?
Ah, yes.
Councilman Mahmud?
Yes.
Councilman Chowdhury?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Rafai?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2023-162 approved.
Thank you. So just to clarify, this is the resolution where we're going from twenty million to five million, with the exposure of four hundred and six million.
Thank you, Mayor.
We move to the report. I'm gonna make it short, we don't have much to say. I just want to take this opportunity to congratulate the many people on celebrating their sixty-first anniversary of revolution, which marked the birth of the Republican Yemen in the northern part, and like we said, paved the way to the revolution of October in the south, got rid of the British occupation, and that, the outcome of that was the reunion of south and north into one Yemen in nineteen ninety. I was invited today by a high school student who celebrated this anniversary, and I went there for one hour. I left my work and joined them. There was a lot of food, homemade food and good stuff in there. Yeah, they invited me. Well, that said, I think I just also want to mention that I'm doing my best to communicate with the community. A week ago, I had a meeting with Ross Gordon, discussed some issues of the city, and it was a positive meeting with good outcomes. We have more, more meetings coming, and hopefully we can work together to bring the community together and de-escalate any tension. And that's it for me. Mr. Mayor Portem is not here, he is at the hospital, I hope he gets well. He sent me some pictures, he's getting some cardiac treatment, and I hope he gets better soon. And we move to the city council meeting, I mean, city council report, if anyone wants to say anything.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman.
Well, I just want to thank everybody that showed up here tonight. There's, what I've been to, I attended mostly our weddings. It's crazy, this summer, just so much weddings. And I just want to thank again everybody that showed up here today, you know, every night, every Saturday.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
I was in New York City last week, I had a very good experience. I was joined, watching the UN resolution, Prime Minister Bangladesh, she's delivering her speech. I was there, pre-weather, President Prime Minister, I was there three times, three nights. So I enjoy my time there. It is really wonderful, meaningful nation.
Did you get a chance to protest, like in Washington?
It's going on continuously.
If you would speak. Is anyone else?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that Happy Holy American Heritage Month, you should be part of. You have done so much work for this country, there is so much for the city, and it's a cultural, and really, I'm part of the work they've done for this country. Secondly, I'd like to congratulate my Yemeni-American residents, friends and colleagues, and well wishes, Happy Revolution Day. Your history is as rich as your culture, and something to be part of. I have another thing I'd like to address to the chief, that I have assessed that during this month of August, we had thirty accidents in Hamtramck alone. Thirty accidents occurred just in the city of Hamtramck. And that tells me that we have something, we are obligated to do something. The drivers or the visitors that coming in and causing accident, I think, you know, is this the traffic signals, or is this the drivers or the city, the streets that we're not wide enough to see things? But I understand this city is, consists of the immigrants and new drivers. However, there's too many accidents. Overall, the United, the state of Michigan is like less than seven hundred accidents throughout the year, and thirty in Hamtramck alone, you know, insurance is gonna rise, and the claim, all this gonna increase. So I have just the suggestions to the city manager and our Hennessy to, and my colleagues, to reconsider the Conan Street to make it like Holbrook, why, where they can park on the sidewalk. You know, Holbrook is like cars are able to park on the sidewalk, it's, it's, it's paved to the street. The sidewalk and the Holbrook Road isn't the, any, it's not level, but it's, it's level, you know. There's no curb anymore, I don't know why, that was designed that way during the construction.
Are you saying that Conan doesn't have the curb anymore?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think it will eliminate the blind spots, you know. They park on the street and the car is trying to cross the street, and blind spots is causing the accident mostly, crossing from, you know, one side to another side. And if the street is, gets level and they park closer to the sidewalk, it's still gonna have sidewalks, but I think, you know, something to consider. The Conan, it's congested, heavy traffic on Conan now during the school, during the mosque. It's all, you know, causing the accident, something to think about. And I'd like to also say that everyone, thank you so much for being here, and I, we listen to your concern. We really appreciate your comment. You are welcome to say anything you want, no one is stopping you. Your, your time is there, but it has to be limited due to, we have, we have to go home. We have some other things to do, but we do respect everybody's time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any more reports? City manager, do you have anything to say?
Just briefly, wanted to touch on the tree grant we got. I think we spoke about it at the last meeting, the city was awarded a million-dollar tree grant, big deal. We had applied for fifteen hundred trees for the city, a tree steward and some programs in order to be able to maintain and catalog all that. We had it before, but unfortunately, all those subscriptions expired, but now we are hoping to re-up that. So we'll be looking for an actual position to deal with the trees coming up. We're not exactly sure on the full parameters yet of what we were granted, but we did get the official notice that we did get it. Additionally, Councilman Rafai and I attended the press release slash ceremonial planting over Detroit. The region got about forty million for this, so. That's all I have, we do not need the closed session that was on the agenda then.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. We move back to the public conference.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarah Tyrion? Two minutes?
Okay, so if I don't use my full two minutes, then I feel like it should be given back to people who were cut off. So Mr. Popeye and Sarah...
Well, they were cut off based on their time, not the allotted time for the public comment.
Right, but the city attorney just said that they would limit it to thirty minutes total before the meeting, right?
But everybody did speak in the beginning of the meeting. Anybody who wanted to speak did speak, but they were just allotted their three minutes. But everybody who wanted to speak did speak at the first public comment.
Right, but did the whole public comment last thirty minutes?
It's still limited per individual for three minutes. Even if we have, even if we only use twenty-five minutes out of the thirty minutes, it doesn't give each individual person that extra time to speak. The rules are three minutes plus an additional one minute if needed. Is it one minute at the first meeting or just the second meeting?
It's three at the beginning.
And then two plus one, yes.
So if he was needing one more minute...
He could ask for an additional minute if he wanted to.
Okay.
Well, in the, at the end, in the beginning it's three minutes, three minutes per person.
So you're asking the people of Hamtramck to organize themselves in order to come here, to come to meetings, to tell you their thoughts. So if I have something to say that might align with something that the Queer Alliance has to say, or the people that live on my block have to say, we have to figure out who's gonna come and talk, like, that doesn't make any sense. Like, what if I don't have any friends that live here, and I just want to talk about one thing? Like, you have to, like, make it make sense for the people that live here, that come to these meetings because they care about their community. And if we're expected to do all that, then I think that council members should be reading the actual minutes, things that are in the actual minutes.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yeah, no problem.
Mark, Mark Coray?
We have two issues. One is the Yemeni revolution, uh, resolution. I'll tell you, my history goes back to Yemeni people over thirty-five years. I can remember back in the eighties, Zindani Party started, there was a murder took place, they killed Zindani. His cousin is Imam Zindani, and I'm the person who filed a private discompensation played with State of Michigan back in the eighties, so they could get a thousand dollars paid for his funeral and so forth. He was murdered not too far from here, Zindani Party Store, that was back in the eighties. And I remember, I was like, last year in law school, there was the Yemeni revolution back in nineteen ninety. It was funny because we thought in Vietnam, we sided with the south. It was sort of go to the north, and we're supporting North Yemen this time. And we eventually became an ally, okay? So I really, the Yemeni people, I've known Yemeni people for a long time, my first Yemeni case... My first Yemeni case was a Yemeni slipped one or something Sears Roebuck back in the 80s. And I got a settlement for her because she injured herself, Sears Roebuck. So since that time, I've gone on, you know, representing them, everything, drug cases, everything. But any event, kept a long way. We now have a State House member, I know very well, Representative Yash. And so many people, Yemenis have become prominent in metro Detroit. And we congratulate all of them for their role. I remember back in the 80s, the few allies that the, that Mayor Guido had, who was anti-Arab, was the Yemeni community. And I think that a lot has come since that time. Other issue I talked to was about self-insurance. Self-insurance, we used to lock into Livonia, Dearborn Heights, Farben Hills, all of its self-insured claims. The reason I know this is because I filed some claims against those cities. In fact, his wife was working for me. Who does she reach to file claims? In fact, we had the litigation against the city of Hamtramck.
Thank you, Mark.
She says hi.
Yeah, yeah. So nice seeing you guys.
Thank you.
That's it for public comment.
All right, so the closed session was canceled?
Yeah.
All right.
So your motion, please.
Motion, second. Nine o'clock exact? Yes. Mr. Seifert? Mr. Seifert?